Everybody ready? Let's bring it to order. Call to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
I am present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. We've got a lot of awards tonight, so it's gonna be a... It's gonna be a fun night.
In your Housing Authority?
The, uh... Prayer will be done by the... I've already got lost. Ah, here we go. The Boy Scout Chaplain, Aide Patrick Buxton. You, Patrick? Come on.
Ladies and gentlemen, please bow your heads for the invocation. God of wisdom and strength, thank you for the freedoms we have this night, our nation, and in this community. Freedom to assemble, freedom to debate, freedom to vote, and the freedom of the citizens to speak and reply to the decisions made here this evening. We thank the mayor and the council for inviting our troop to see their government in action this afternoon, watch over, and guide us during this meeting, and see us safely home to our families tonight. We pray this in your most merciful name. Amen.
Patrick, can you pick somebody to do the pledge? Well, we just need one of them. Get that kid's name. He's going places.
Put her all of that. Let's get the whole team up there.
Emmett, you were late for your own award.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance. All those in uniform, please salute. All others, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, wait a minute, did you get the picture?
That's pledge good, man. That's pretty good. Pledge leader.
So, do you want to do the Housing Authority now, or you want to do it... What's the... I don't think the...
We don't have a quorum yet, so let's wait till we do the...
Okay, so you'll let me know when we do? Good, thank you. Okay. Emmett.
Yes, sir.
So, if anybody told... Come on over here, I'm gonna read this to you. I'm really excited about giving Emmett this award, because Emmett and I have gone to war with each other more times than I can count. We have been friends many times. We have disagreed and agreed, but I've always been comfortable that Emmett's heart was for our community. And no matter how much I would disagree with him at times, or no matter how much... I mean, sometimes he was just wrong, and he would disagree with me. I've always known that. And so I'm thrilled. Tonight, we are excited to honor the newest recipient of our Community Contributor Award. Each recipient has been chosen for his or her work within the Lancaster community, and for taking the initiative to create positive change throughout the city and in the lives of our residents. I am pleased to recognize tonight's honoree, who has worked tirelessly to improve the lives of our valley's youth, and who has made it his life mission to ensure that our children one day become our leaders by guiding them down the right path. Let's watch a video that captures just a smidgen of what Emmett has done for us.
To be able to say that I know my presence changed the life and the direction of a young man, that became the most important aspect in my life. I went to Long Beach Valley. In 1961, I was a middleweight champion of California, Arizona, and Nevada. At that time, got the most blessed experience of all. I got to spend almost a month with Ali when he was Cassius Clay. Was not only touched by his humor and his wit, but he was also a very spiritual man, and I think at that time, I was striving for something like that. I did all the bad things that you don't want your son to do, you know? And there was a price to pay for it. And that stroke later kinda exemplified what that was about, even though that was many, many years later. I came out of an environment where there wasn't a lot of reason to trust those around you to do what was good and what was right. One of the people, I guess, that impressed me as much as anybody in this community was Mark. City Lancaster played a great deal in my growth and maturity, and Rex did also. And then I met this man who had such a presence, and that was Bishop Hearn's. He not only had presence, he had a way of communicating that presence to make one feel they could raise to that level of prominence within the community. I had my first home in Long Beach. I had a boys' home right in the heart of the inner city. The kids began to migrate toward me, because I liked doing what all kids liked to. I used to take them hunting. All the ones that grew up in my boys' home that became, for all intents and purposes, my children. There were youngsters that I had interacted with that I could give information that would deter them from thinking there was only one way to transcend what was going on. To have those things that a young man strives to have in his life when he begins to make decisions about his own manhood, that became very special. Very special.
Community Contributor Award is a very high honor bestowed by Mayor Paris and the City Council on people that have had a lifetime of contribution to the Antelope Valley and Lancaster in particular. One of the things that I truly appreciate about Emmett, and he's taught me, is he... We don't always get along. I still don't get along and agree with everything of Emmett, and he doesn't agree with everything I believe in. But the thing he taught me and that he preaches and lives by is, he believes truly in dialogue and redemption. From that has sprung a beautiful friendship, and a trusted friendship that is not based on thinking the same, but it's based on wanting the same thing.
One of the members of my church introduced me to Emmett, and we just kinda... Just drew each other in right away, so... And I'm gonna guess that would have been more than 25 years ago. In the process of becoming acquainted with the Word, and he and his wife Stella became members of the church, and we began to work together and walk together, I anointed him and set him up as one of the elders of our church.
He's more than a contributor to the community, he's more like a pillar in a community. When I think of Emmett, Emmett's the kinda guy that everybody's welcome at his table. He's just inviting. It doesn't matter what your background is, he's just gonna love you and care for you. There is a scripture that I love, it's Isaiah 1:17. It says, "Learn to do good, seek justice, and to correct oppression." And he's just a man who's always gonna fight for the good of others.
Emmett has a heart for this community. Emmett has put his blood, sweat, and tears into this community. He really loves the Antelope Valley, and he only wants the city and this community to become better. For a kid that grew up in the city, Emmett loves the outdoors. So him being a Buffalo Soldier is no surprise. He loves horses, he loves gardening, he loves anything that's outdoors. He was invited over a decade ago to become a Buffalo Soldier. He's written in the Rose Bowls Parade, he's written and represented the Buffalo Soldiers all over the country.
He is truly like a walking thesaurus as it relates to Black history. Intriguing, all the way. Knows so much about it, I mean, he just rattles it off like it's nothing, and keeps you interested and engaged. In spite of the challenge that he faces, he's a survivor.
A godly presence. He's given me the opportunity to see my great-grandkids, watch them begin to flourish. And he's given me the strength physically to not forsake my goal, my mission. And my mission hasn't changed.
Emmett Morell experienced many struggles as a child, from the loss of his father at a young age, to interactions with street gangs, ultimately finding his way out through athletics, primarily boxing. Morell then went on to study at California State University Northridge, where he learned of Nelson Mandela's transformation from radical to mentor. It was then that Morell found his calling. He went on to serve as a youth counselor for the Santa Monica Boys and Girls Club, before bringing his passion project to the Antelope Valley. Now Morell resides over the Morell's Farm and Boys' Home here in Lancaster. Elder Morell, as he's called, has mentored and provided guidance to hundreds of young men throughout the Antelope Valley. His guidance is considered priceless by those who have chosen a different, less fruitful path without it. Morell has... Also serves as a member of the faith-based community, and as an activist for a number of causes throughout the Antelope Valley. Activist is a little mellow of a word. Tonight, I'm proud to recognize Emmett Morell for his unwavering dedication to the futures of our valley's young men, and for all he has done and continues to do for the betterment of the Antelope Valley. And before I present those awards, you know, a lot of us were reaching the end of how much longer we're going to be serving the community. I mean, it's just biology, you know? We only got so long, right? And there's some things we've learned, that it would be a shame if we didn't pass it on. Both of us have at times been very critical of each other's rhetoric, and the things that comes out of our mouths when we're angry about something. And I think that's been mutual, hasn't it? And what we learned, and it took us a few years to learn it, but what we learned was that if we just quit questioning each other's motives, and just accept the idea that maybe we want the same thing, which is a place for our families to thrive, that if we just accept that, then all of a sudden, the discussion becomes much, much different. And it's actually been hard for us to get mad at each other for the last couple of years, because of that aspect. I think, I know he loves this community, I think he knows I love this community, and that we really do want the same thing. And so there are people in this room who are going to come after us. If we could teach you one thing, if we could leave one thing behind, I think it's that. Quit questioning each other's motives. We can question how we wanna get to different places, and what's the best way to lift us up. And we can fight about that and argue about that, but if we just accept the fact that our motives are pure, things work out a lot better, don't they? And this is... He's become one of my dearest friends. It helps to be a dear friend of the mayor when you get awards, right? So, here's the Community Appreciation Award. And let's get a picture of this, and if you'd like to bring anybody else... Okay, Jesse, where's Jesse?
In the back corner.
Why are you hiding? Come on down here. Come on down, Farah. You know, it's really great that in Emmett's office, there's this picture of all these guys, and they're looking like that, just as mean as could be, you know? And then I got to know who they are, and every time I'd go by that picture, I'd start laughing, because it just isn't them.
Yes, he should.
If you remember the last time we were all in this room.
And then, finally, we have a check for $1,000 to the Community Action League. Now, I want you to know that that caused a lot of consternation. But here it is. Let's get a picture of that.
This is yours? Let me put it back in there. Put it over there. Honestly, I'm truly grateful. This is just the opposite of what was predicted for me by the time I got out of 7th grade. And that I got to come to a community that was receptive, and open-armed, and then met a great spiritual mountain of a man in Bishop Henry Hearn's. And then, more important than anything, I got to collaborate with men who had themselves gone through similar negative circumstances in the homes and the families that they came from. And some of them are still astonishing. I'm blessed to get to work with them, get to share our knowledge of one another, and then to have a total misconception of someone, as I did with... It is true, I did have a misconception. And I don't know whether it was the white hair or just the whiteness.
I'm the one who says inappropriate things.
I thank all of you for coming here. I had no idea, I had no idea what was happening, I really didn't. All I knew is I was called to the City Hall, and this... And what's his name? What's the name that did the... The one that did the investigation and everything, did the pictures and everything? Yeah. He just... Yeah, there he is. Yeah, what the hell is over there? And this is your city manager, right here. Awesome, awesome, awesome man. Humble, serious, and real. And the man that spoke, and I couldn't be more proud than to have Pastor, um... Chris speak. Yes. And I'm not gonna say anything else.
I wanted to tell him the story, I was quoted in the paper saying I'd cut off my hand before I ever met with Emmett Morell. And he shows up my house with a knife. True story, right? Thank you very much. Love you too. Jim. It's... I guess we're just in a transition period.
I think we are.
You know?
This is a tough act to follow. I have no business following something like that.
Yeah, you do. You do. You know, Jim is selling the... You already sold it, or you... He has the Toyota dealership, an extremely successful business in town, but more importantly, he has been so committed to us, every time we've asked for something, he's been there. He dreams stuff up himself, and funds it for the city. Even when he built the business, the new building, he built it with a community center at the top of it, so that we would have a place to meet if we ran out of places to meet. Rarely do you run across an individual that has had such a commitment to a community where your business is, but you've never actually lived here. It's been amazing to me to watch you over the years. At this time, I would like to take a moment to recognize a very devoted community member and local businessman, Jim Hawes. Jim owned Sierra Toyota Scion?
Scion.
Scion. Well, no wonder it never took off, if the name was...
Nobody could ever pronounce it.
For 23 years, from 1994 through 2017, and has been an incredible and involved city partner. Jim has been a generous supporter of numerous community events, including supporting the Streets of Lancaster Grand Prix, the Boulevard Summer Concert Series, and the California Poppy Festival. You know, the Boulevard Summer Concert Series, think about that. I mean, it wasn't thousands of people coming. It was just a... Something that was given to the community once a week. We knew that there was this event downtown, that, you know, there wasn't any... There wasn't anything in it for you. I didn't even see signs, you know? Normally, you know, I'll put my signs everywhere, but I didn't see that with that. I just saw it as a gift to the community, which was fabulous. His philanthropy efforts include raising funds for both MOA and LPAC, the YMCA, the American Cancer Society, the Fergoso Outdoor Foundation, Gerald Hancock Family, and Jim is also the presenting sponsor for the 1998 ASA Men's Class D National Championship, a city-directed tournament. I assume that's a sports thing, right?
Softball.
Jim has also been very much involved in numerous ways throughout the community. He served as president of the Lancaster Autumn All Association. He served on the board of the Fernandez Earl Scholarship Foundation, and is the founding father of the Los Angeles County Air Show. Have everybody been to the air show? I mean, that is a huge endeavor. That's one of those things he dreams up and gets people together and creates. We're gonna really miss you.
I'm not going away too far.
Good. Jim is now enjoying a well-deserved retirement. On behalf of the entire Lancaster City Council, I'd like to thank Jim Hawes for all that he has done for our community. Your unwavering dedication to our city is a true inspiration. We have a plaque for you. First, we have this, and then we have the plaque. And Ms. Harvey showed up! Come on down, let's do it all. This should be...
How was it, staff?
Good.
I want everybody in it. Come on. Everybody. Nobody's done quite as much as Jim. Let me do this one more time. I want everybody in it. Lee is ashamed to picture. Nothing. Picture?
Let's get the whole audience up here.
Elizabeth's in front, you know that?
So the reason I wanted to be here tonight was to come and thank all of you for helping me be a success. This community has given my wife and myself and my family so much, and to... Every time I've needed something, I've had issues, I've brought things to the city, there's never been a no. It's, well, let's see what we can do. And, believe me, that has really helped my business and helped us thrive. All the way back to, I mean, I see Reverend here, Reverend Hearn's, who, to this day, he's a personal friend, I love this man. And everybody in the council, all the way back 23 years in this community, has been a help, and it's really made doing business here very easy for me. And so I really wanted to thank all of you personally. That's why I'm here, not for this, believe me. Everybody below you that works for you and the city has been wonderful. Mark has been outstanding, Jason, outstanding. Rhonda back there's been outstanding, fun to work with. All of the staff has always, when I've said I need some help, or I need this, or I need that, it's always been, let's see what we can do, try and help you. And again, I can't thank you enough, from the bottom of my heart. It's been a pleasure doing business with you.
areas. The CWEA pointed to his leadership in training new employees and his excellent journeyman skills within his field. With nearly 20 years of service with our city under his belt, Mike has held a number of positions within the Development Services Department. He has been part of the Lancaster wastewater treatment since it took the sewer infrastructure over from Los Angeles County nearly 10 years ago. Mike Armstrong is one of the most productive members of the sewer team. In fact, he and his team are responsible for cleaning 429 miles of the city's sewer lines, as well as maintaining a sewer pump station and nearly 8,000 manhole covers. It is because of the dedicated staff members such as Mike that residents and businesses can rest assured that one of the most vital pieces of our city's infrastructure is well-maintained. On behalf of the Lancaster City Council, I would like to thank you for your continued service to the city of Lancaster and your commitment to our residents. I congratulate, congratulate you on a very well-deserved prestigious award. Rhonda, come on up for a picture. And then the person taking the picture is their daughter, so. And, and you know, let's, let's keep in mind what this means. It means he's the guy that's not throwing all that water away. And we're all, we all realize the last couple of years just how vital that is. And this is really a big deal. It's statewide. Thank you. Can I say one? He also knows the way to my heart. He is an exceptional home brewer that makes dynamite beer and brings occasional samples in for us. Thank you. You know, the, the, the great thing about this city is, you know, I've had a, I've been doing this a few years now. Most cities' staff has problems when they got to explain why they did something. I can honestly say in this city, that rarely happens. You might have to explain why you said no to something. It's a whole different, different frame of mind. I mean, if, if this staff isn't moving and moving that ball forward every day, then people ask them to explain why not. When Jim comes in with an idea that needs permitting, if he doesn't get it, somebody better be able to explain why. Rather than most cities, the easiest thing to do is just say no, because you don't want to have to explain why you said yes. See, did I articulate that well enough?
You did that well.
Good. Thank you. Now, on to another subject, which is actually a problem in this community that we never talk about. Or if we do talk about, we don't talk about enough. And we put fancy words around it that minimize it. It's, as many of you know, January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. While slavery was abolished more than 150 years ago, it still exists today in the form of human trafficking. In fact, approximately 15,000 people are trafficked each year in the United States alone. And I think that's really understated. Human trafficking refers to the exploitation of individuals through forced labor, domestic servitude, debt bondage, forced marriage, and sex trafficking of both minors and adults. Human Trafficking Awareness Month seeks to raise awareness, prevent and help facilitate the elimination of human trafficking. Becoming aware of human trafficking indicators is the first step towards making a difference here in our community and keeping our children safe. As both a father and a grandfather of young children, I fully support the Human Trafficking Awareness Month. In order to help these injustices, bring these injustices to light, we must all stand together to put an end to the entrapment of human life. As mayor, I am proclaiming January 2018 Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Lancaster. And understand what this means. We will bulldoze down motels that have underage prostitutes working in them. And I'm putting every one of those hotels, motels on notice. We are coming after you. And make no mistake, this is Lancaster. We do put fences around businesses that engage in illegal activity. But the days of having young children being prostituted in the, in the city of Lancaster is over. It will be our number one enforcement from this point on. There will be zero tolerance for it. These people that are running a business on Craigslist with young children, get ready to go to prison, because we are putting all of our resources into taking you down. We're sending it to the organization? Okay, good. And with that, let's do some work. Oh, you're not the new guy anymore, are you?
All right, maybe we'll bring staff up. Inspectors and the maintenance services, anyone from Public Works, come on up. Gabe? All right, just like tonight, throughout the year, the city of Lancaster receives many acknowledgements and rewards, awards throughout the, the year. However, anytime the city council's commitment and dedication to public safety is recognized locally, regionally, and even nationally, it confirms Lancaster's successful proactive approach to improving public safety. Whether it's the council's revived 25 pavement management program, the complete streets master plan, the school, the Safe Routes to School Master Plan, all these programs and commitments are to keep our pedestrians, drivers, passengers, bicyclists safe. So when the local chapter of the American Public Works Association announced last month that the city of Lancaster was awarded their 2017 Public Safety Improvement Award for one of the city council's newest programs, the Summer Sidewalks Program, it was just another feather in the council's public safety cap. The Summer Sidewalks Program included repairing 25,000 square feet of sidewalk, replacing 100 or more curbs and gutters, and updating more than a dozen curb ramps, making it more accessible for seniors and other pedestrians. So I want to congratulate the city of Lancaster and the council's leadership for this 2017 Public Safety Improvement Award. And also, really, the folks behind me who implemented this program are the ones that are out there in summer, dead heat, 100 degrees, taking care of the sidewalks, repairing things, and taking the city very seriously in our public safety improvement. So I want to congratulate the city council, the city, and the folks in Public Works. So, thank you. City Clerk, I'd like to call the Lancaster Housing Authority meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Housing Authority Member Mann-
Present.
Harvey-
Present.
Vice Chair Chris-
Present.
Chair Zetto. We have a quorum.
I need a motion of second to excuse Chair.
So moved.
Second.
If we have a motion as second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to go ahead with the, the Housing Authority calendar.
Do we have any speaker cards?
I think we do. Is this just the consent calendar, what we're doing, Mark?
Yes, it is a consent calendar for the Housing Authority.
And we have speakers on the consent calendar. Does someone want to give a presentation, or does, we want to hear the speakers and maybe answer them afterwards?
You might want to hear the staff report first. That might answer some questions.
I think the mayor has to recuse himself in this?
He's not on the-
No, he's just not on the Housing Authority.
Is it the next one?
But, I think you-
You're talking about successor agency?
This, this does have to do with the homeless service center. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're gonna-
You know, we haven't decided if I have a conflict on that yet or not because of the corporate, how things get intertwined. But I, I'll go ahead and recuse myself. And if it turns out I don't, then I'll start voting on it, okay?
Very good.
And I'm going to leave that up to the city attorney to decide.
Right, whether that is a client relationship that requires recusal. Yes.
Okay. We have a speaker card. David Paul.
Wait, we're not going to hear the presentation?
I'm going to hear these guys first, and maybe they can answer it with the-
Okay.
-presentation. Go ahead, David.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Agency Directors, good evening. Happy New Year to everybody. Councilwoman Underwood Jacobs, I missed you last night. And you're a calming influence up there. So I just wanted to tell you that. And anybody tonight, I have a little flare-up of eczema on my hands. And if I didn't shake your hand, I'm sorry. I just didn't want to do that. So anyway, what I should have probably talked about last time was how proud I am of my city in regards to this new project, the Kensington Campus Project. I went to all the county consortium homeless meetings, and I left the final one when they put up their recommendations. There was actually no action there. There was nothing that was going to happen. They were just ideas. And it seemed a little empty. I remember one of the meetings that I asked with my minute, if you were a homeless person sitting in this audience, how would you feel about what occurred tonight? How much hope would that give you? And there wasn't a lot of hope there. This project represents hope. We're going to actually do something. And the mayor talked about the next layer of leaders to come up. I was particularly proud of Toy Chisholm at those meetings, because she asked sensible questions. You know, if you're going to say this, we're going to do this, how are we going to do it? And here we are in this city, and we're actually going to do something that's going to help people and help improve their lives and help us look like the compassionate city that we actually are. You know, we're, we're going to do something. So I want to hear all about it. I want to help in any way I can. And I commend everyone involved for actually doing something. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, but you're still going to have to wait your turn. Robert Teller.
Yes. As a small business person myself, I like to comment on this loan. I don't think this is a good way to spend city money and wait that long to get it repaid. First of all, when I read in the paper that this has gone on, I was unaware of it before they had the development meeting, or I'd have been there. I think there's a better way of doing this. I'd like to ask a question. Has anybody on the board walked up and down Lancaster Boulevard and talked to the homeless like I have? Anybody?
I have.
You ask them if they would go out, all the way out there to that place, or any other, like 60th Street, for a place to stay at night?
Actually, no. We're looking at, we're asking them what their problems are and how we can help them, and how to get them off the street, and how to get them under shelter. So we're looking for other ways to do that, because last night wasn't a good night for the homeless.
No, it wasn't. But I don't think 20 units for a, a deal for them, a shelter for them, is going to address the major unit that we have. If you went over by Grace Resources and talked to the people over there around Christmas time when they were being served, or over to St. Vincent's De Paul, you'll find that these people, when you ask them, would they go out to 60th? Would they go out to Avenue I around 32nd Street? The answer is no. They would not go that far. They will stay right here in the city. They'll stay as close as they can to other concerns, small places where they can buy cigarettes, they can buy sodas, stuff like this, if they get the money. Now, they do panhandle. We do have a major problem. I'm not, I'm not minimizing that at all. But I don't think that somebody from out of this area, building a building to house only 20 units for, for homeless, is going to do anything to help this. And the city to loan the taxpayers money for that, I don't find to be to the best interest. We need to do something major. How about the Kmart building, turning that into a homeless shelter? Because right across the street, they have small businesses. If they have some needs, they could go over there. If they have processed the money to do so. That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Robert, you are aware that the homeless shelter out at 60th and I is currently full?
Yeah.
How about the fair grants?
And, as well as, thank you. Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor Chris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, we talked about this for years, ever since Catholic charities gave up running shelter. And the cities have come up with different solutions. Maybe not the best solution, but they, they've made an attempt to do something. I don't think this is a solution to build a homeless village out on the west side of town. Number one, we've approved developments out there of housing. Nobody's going to buy high-income housing by a homeless village. Number two, like Bob mentioned, all the facilities are here downtown. Rather than build this facility out in the desert to get rid of the homeless downtown, I would like that $700,000 to be used to expand the old shelter downtown. And furthermore, have one of the missions downtown run this program. You know, I've thought about this a lot. And the clincher to me is, and just feel the air, it's too cold and too hot up here to have this facility in this environment. You're asking people who grew up in a moderate temperature to come up here and live in this environment. Four months of the year, it's beautiful up here. The other eight months, it's tragic. We can do better than this. We can give them an alternative. We can give them a bed for the night. We can have a concern, take care of them, and take them back down below. But we shouldn't take advantage of poor, sick, homeless- And the city to loan the taxpayers' money for that, I don't find to be to the best interest. We need to do something major. How about the Kmart building, turning that into a homeless shelter? Because right across the street, they have small businesses. If they have some needs, they could go over there, if they have processed the money to do so. That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Robert, you are aware that the homeless shelter out at 60th and I is currently full?
Yeah.
How about the fair grants?
As well as...thank you.
Vice Mayor Chris, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, we talked about this for years, ever since Catholic charities gave up running shelter, and the cities come up with different solutions. Maybe not the best solution, but they've made an attempt to do something. I don't think this is a solution to build a homeless village out on the west side of town. Number one, we've approved developments out there of housing. Nobody's gonna buy high-income housing by a homeless village. Number two, like Bob mentioned, all the facilities are here downtown. Rather than build this facility out in the desert to get rid of the homeless downtown, I would like that $700,000 to be used to expand the old shelter downtown, and furthermore, have one of the missions downtown run this program. You know, I've thought about this a lot, and the clincher to me is, and just feel the air, it's too cold and too hot up here to have this facility in this environment. You're asking people who grew up in a moderate temperature to come up here and live in this environment. Four months of the year, it's beautiful up here. The other eight months, it's tragic. We can do better than this. We can give them an alternative. We can give them a bed for the night. We can have a concern, take care of them, and take them back down below. But we shouldn't take advantage of poor, sick, homeless people and have them come up here to live in this environment. It's not right. That's why...I know you're gonna approve it, but it's not the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mark, you wanna give us a brief presentation?
I'm actually...Elizabeth's gonna give the presentation.
Okay.
That's okay.
Elizabeth, why don't you take the time to explain some of the concerns, too, that were brought up?
And can you explain that we have certain pots that are directly...that we have to spend that money for this? We can't take it and use it wherever we want? So Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Marvin Chris, and Housing Authority members. The money that's being used is strictly for the 51 permanent housing units for the homeless, not for the shelter. The $700,000 comes from a...probably about $4 or $5 million of grant funds that were granted to the city, that they loaned to developers to build affordable housing, and all of those loans are at no interest. And the reason they're at no interest and they are deferred loans is because all of the housing is affordable. And in order to make the housing affordable, you have to be able to provide them the money to be able to make a little bit to pay for all of the expenses in the operation of the building. So it is restricted home program income. It can only go towards providing affordable housing. Those 51 units that will be built there will reduce our inclusionary housing deficit, which is a requirement that we have to meet through the state of California in order to continue to operate and do housing programs and projects. So this project is at 32nd Street West and Avenue I, not 60th and Avenue I, and it's permanent housing for homeless. Those people in the permanent housing are going to assist those who are coming in off the streets and help them become and obtain permanent housing. So that's what this program, this money is about, and what I'm asking you to do is to approve the loan agreement to provide the permanent housing for homeless.
Can you talk a little bit about how HUD has come in and said we want permanent housing, not shelters, to be built? How they've...they have a transition in that area?
Yeah, starting, I would say, probably in the early '80s, when the institutions were closed by the Reagan administration because they couldn't afford to run institutions, they started what you called the homeless shelters. But the homeless shelters didn't really work because the people didn't have a car, they lost their phone, they lost their dignity, and it became a spiral of not being able to get back into employment. So then came the philosophy of having transitional housing. But the transitional housing hasn't really worked. So what they want to do, and what this project is gonna do, and it's probably gonna be studied and be the only one, I'm for sure, in the state of California, maybe the nation, is it's gonna have housing that starts from being homeless to permanent, but it's not a shelter, per se. It's not transitional housing, per se. It's a different type of housing with all of the services to help people to get back into the mainstream of society and be employable and be able to function and have a support system.
It's a start?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Maureen, you have a speaker card, but it's late. Do you still want to speak?
Yeah.
We've been here before. This is what the Artist Loft was, $5.5 million in HUD financing for low-income housing. Of course, we need low-income housing. That goes without saying, especially what's happening in LA. But we got 45 homeless people right now on the street with problems that will keep them from ever accessing those 20 housing units. The mentally ill, the unemployable, we've got issues that need to be dealt with now. We...three months ago, our city council told us the closing of the shelter was no big deal because it was 100 beds. Now you want to do a low-interest loan of almost a million for 20 units? And we could not come up with the $100,000 it would've taken to keep our shelter open. You know, I don't understand this. We were promised the county hospital two years ago.
Can I correct you real quick? We didn't shut the shelter. We had nothing to do with shutting the shelter.
Okay, I'll pretend that's true, Marv, but I don't believe it, okay? The city had quite a bit to do with shutting that shelter.
Okay.
Okay.
That's not...it's not true. We didn't have anything to do with the shelter. What we're trying to do is...we're trying to do something. We're not trying to take large steps. I think we asked the community, "What do you want us to do?", and they said, "Go back, use the money that's already there, and take baby steps." So that's what we're trying to do now.
We had a million dollars given to us for the homeless two years ago by Antonovich, and we've never heard about that again. Two years ago, for a year, we were led to believe that the county hospital would be exactly what you're talking about now.
Correct.
Only instead of 20 units, they would've been able to handle 700 homeless a night.
Correct.
Okay? You backed away from that because of money, but now we're finding money for something that is a drop in the bucket compared to what we could've had.
Let me answer your accusation. We didn't back away because of money. The county came in, the fire department said it was unsafe, it needed to be sprinkled, and the equipment there, the earthquake, had to be refurbished. So the city did everything that was possible to make it happen, but it would've cost $33 million to refit that area, and we could build it besides doing that.
Marv, I attended those consortium meetings. I was there, okay? The community came together and put pressure on the county, and guess what? The county hospital has been given special compensation to operate without that. I would also like to point out that it was $35 million to bring it up to speed.
Correct.
But we found $135 million to put in a female jail next door, a woman's jail.
Now, you're...that's apples and oranges because that's not...
I understand the funding is apples and oranges, but we didn't fight for one and we didn't fight against the other.
We are fighting for everything. I have to quit, so I'm not...I need to shut you off. But it's not that we're not quitting. We are out there fighting for everybody.
Are you gonna even put it out to bid, or is it...is there a reason why there are these no-bid contracts going out with this HUD money? Is this gonna even go to bid? Are you guys gonna insist that this goes out to bid, or are we gonna go forward and just hand Insight?
I think we've already awarded the contract.
Without bid? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve the loan agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve HA-CC-1, approving the loan agreement between the Lancaster Housing Authority and Insight Development.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. And we have unanimous 3-0. Okay. Do we need to call the mayor back in and then he recues himself again, or...
Yeah, we move to the successor agency.
The reason for his recusal on the successor agency item is because of the proximity of the project in question to his law firm's office.
I understand that. Do we need to call him back in to do that?
I just did it for him.
Okay. Okay. So we have no speaker cards?
So we're looking for a motion then, generally?
I am.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve SA-CC-1, authorizing the city manager designated to subordinate the successor agency's existing lien with the Antelope Valley Mazda.
Okay, this is not the housing agency, so we'll do...I think they have to have a transition for the vote. We'll do a oral vote on this. So all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We have four yes votes. Okay. Someone get the mayor, please?
To abstain from the previous meeting this summer?
Did you read them? You don't have to abstain if you read them.
Marvin, everybody was so happy when I left and...
But they were all talking about you.
Oh. Do we reconvene the city council meeting? Is that what we do?
We're already there.
We're on the...
We're at SA-NB-1.
Yeah, new business under successor agency. Mayor.
Okay. Any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards. You want to wave the...
Yeah, let's wave it.
We have...
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution SA-01-18.
Is there a second? What's the problem?
Here we go.
Was that Patty?
You have to announce the vote.
Oh, it's unanimous. Passes. Okay, NB-2. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards. I'll move we adopt Resolution SA-02-18.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Any speaker cards on the minutes?
No speaker cards on the minutes. I'll move to approve M1.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. The consent calendar, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Is there...
I'll move we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second.
Let's vote. So I gotta recuse myself again? And why...oh, same issue?
I'm keeping you busy tonight.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on PH-1. We have no speaker cards?
We wave the staff report then, huh?
Wave the staff report. I need a motion.
Close the public hearing, please.
Close the public hearing.
With that, I'll move that we adopt Resolution number 18-01.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. We have four yes votes, and Mayor Paris recusing himself.
So that's it?
Yeah.
We have a speaker card in CA-3, but we need these three.
We were gonna discuss the planning commission appointment, or is...
Sir, Mr. Moore intended to be here, but he has the flu, so he is not able to make it.
Okay, so let's just kick that off to the following meeting, okay? The...so, Councilwoman Underwood Jacobs, you want to tell us about the SARS situation?
Thank you very much. In actually talking and working with SARS, which is the Sexual Assault Awareness Services, it's come to our attention that we are having somewhat of an issue at AV Hospital with people that are coming in that have been sexually assaulted. As they leave the premises, they are not...they're in need of clothing, clothing, food. And what we are wanting to do is to present a check to the SARS team so that they can actually help the people that are in need, that are actually in crisis. The people that are in need are men, women, and children. And what we're wanting to do, considering that they have been through something so horrendous, is to give them somewhat a bit of comfort, if that is all possible, for them, so that they can make the transition and go on with their lives. So that is what we're wanting to do tonight.
Yeah, and then the action before you would be to appropriate the funding, and should the council so choose to do that, we would then provide the funds out of a restricted non-general fund source.
So it's not gonna take a...any action on the part of the council?
Just a vote to appropriate $15,000.
So can we...is it agendized sufficiently to vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, good. My understanding of it is, is people come in, they have to take their clothes because there's evidence, you know? We've all seen it on television, or, you know, how that goes. And so then, these folks are without clothes, and especially with all of them, but certainly with the kids, is we don't want them to be identified leaving wearing the clothes they wear, you know, when that occurs. So we want them to have a selection of clothes, so that it...there's no...you know, we're not painting them with a brush. And this is a start of that.
Exactly, and it gives them...we want to try to restore the dignity that is lost through outgoing through the situation itself.
It...I mean, too often, we're...it's very hard for people to get back on track with their lives, and so anything we can do to further that, we want to. So is there a motion?
So we can take action on this tonight?
Yes, it is agendized for appropriation. You can take action.
Okay, well, then I'll make the motion then to appropriate the $15,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. The opioid crisis, I was gonna push that off because we're working with the county on some things, but we have a speaker card. And is it Sarah May?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on down. You can speak on it anyway. I mean, people ought to recognize that we have the highest mortality rate for opioid abuse, anyplace in the county, probably the state. It's another one of those underlying problems that we're just not paying a lot of attention to. Isn't that right?
So, good evening. I am a health educator at Tarzana Treatment Centers, and I'm also a representative of the Antelope Valley Marijuana, Alcohol, and Pharmaceutical Prevention Coalition. I am here tonight to voice our concern regarding the increasing opioid problem in our community. According to data gathered at our agency, in 2017, 5.7% of patients in our AV outpatient and day treatment services were being treated for an opioid addiction. In our residential program, opioid users made up 13.3% of the patient population. The key indicators of health from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health found that in the Antelope Valley, in 2016, 5.8% of adults reported misusing prescription drugs in the past year. Data from the California Healthy Kids Survey showed that 3% of 9th graders, 4% of 11th graders, and 11% of students in continuation, Community Day, or alternative high schools in the Antelope Valley reported misuse of prescription painkillers four or more times in the past year. As we know, opioid use is becoming an increasing problem in our community. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration found that non-medical use of prescription drugs and/or opioid pain relievers is now second only to marijuana use as the nation's most prevalent drug of choice. Opioid pain relievers are now involved in more overdose deaths nationwide than heroin and cocaine combined. At Tarzana Treatment Centers, we have recently added prescription drugs to our scope of work in order to get ahead of the epidemic that is sweeping our country. The importance of community-wide public awareness campaigns, safe drug disposal options, drug take-back days, and collaborations with the community, DEA, and law enforcement, as well as community-level education, has been shown to help curb this problem. Tarzana Treatment Centers and AV MAP appreciate your concern and help with addressing this problem. We are always looking for ways to collaborate and work with our government and law enforcement agencies. We will support any preventative and educational... We will support any preventative and educational measures which the city council chooses to pass and which the City of Lancaster and the Sheriff's Department choose to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council reports, CR1, it's me. We appointed Deputy Mayor Marvin Kropke to, as a deputy mayor for economic development, and he's already producing great stuff. We're, we met with, who was that guy we met with?
The first person we met with was a national real estate investment firm interested in Medical Main Street.
The idea that Raj was working on with Medical Main Street, we now are getting very close to being able to start building, put sticks in the ground. And Marvin, you know, he runs the, he's the executive director of the IBW, right? And the contacts he has are truly, truly amazing. And when should we have sticks in the ground, do you think?
Well, we have $13.5 million for the infrastructure component. The planning, planning activity will be done this year sometime, which would then allow us to start this year likely on the infrastructure.
Good, thank you. And then the agricultural ideas that we're being, I want to wait on those. I want to, I want to get community input before we actually discuss them. The upshot of it all is, is get ready for explosive growth. And how we manage the next couple of years are really going to determine what the next 20 look like. Isn't that right, Deputy Mayor Harvey?
It's absolutely correct, sir.
The Deputy Mayor Harvey is working on the housing shortage, and how well we develop that. And the, what is it, 6,000 jobs opening up? 6,000 jobs. Now, imagine what that means. That means another, oh, Vern's gone. What is it, you multiply it by 3.5?
For aerospace jobs, it's about 3.5.
So 20,000 new jobs opening up in the Antelope Valley, and then you have BYD on top of it, and there's no place to house them. How well we build that housing is going to be critically important. If we do it like we've done in the past, it's going to be a mistake. So it ought to be fun in the City of Lancaster, and a lot of, a lot of interesting things will be happening in this room, I'm sure. Okay, Vice Mayor Crist.
I was an alternate on that board. I believe you attended that meeting.
Yeah, but I don't want to talk about it.
You want me to?
It was, it was an exciting meeting, wasn't it?
It was an interesting meeting. Just to make it clear to everybody, that what we had is, we've asked Mayor Ledford not to attend the sanitation meeting because he has been asking individuals for donations to his defense fund. Some of those individuals that he has asked, we were voting on projects that were coming before us. We're required to take a ethics requirement by the state, and the ethics requirement requires us to not do things that are not necessarily not ethical, but the appearance of nonethical. So when you're voting on stuff that have the appearance of being nonethical, we have an obligation to the public not to vote on those or not to do that. We did send a letter to the City of Palmdale asking for an alternate to come to vote during that presentation. They chose to ignore that. That's what the big turmoil has been about. It hasn't been about personalities. It's been about what we're required to do by the state, and the state does require us to have the appearance of what is ethical and not necessarily the ethical side of it. So, that's the gist of the whole problem at the sanitation district.
A lot of people don't understand that there's a lot of different commissions that both cities sit on. And they, sometimes the county's there, sometimes the county's not there. But, I mean, I get, I get tired of reading these letters that we're somehow interested in what's happening in Palmdale. We're really not. But we are concerned about who sits on commissions that have controlling influences in Lancaster. And, you know, it's not a secret, but our sanitation rates are much higher than those in Palmdale. And I just think it's a, it's inappropriate, when criminal charges are pending against somebody, for them to be sitting on boards and then asking people who do business with those boards for campaign funds, not campaign funds, criminal defense funds, to pay your lawyer. And I'm going to continue thinking that that's inappropriate until the day I die. And if, and I really don't care what kind of letter-writing campaign ensues from that, but our duty up here, our obligation is to protect the City of Lancaster from criminal activity. And it's just bizarre to me that that's even a point of contention. But it is. And so we'll just deal with the process, I guess. Okay, any other council reports? California Choice Energy, no action. Lancaster Financing, no action. Lancaster Power Authority, no action. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, just a couple. The last little storm we had was actually more than a little storm. It was .92 inches of rain in Lancaster, which is a pretty good storm. That total surprised me. One of the things I want to highlight is that where, the way you prepare for storms is beforehand. So our crews were out two or three weeks before the rainy season, clearing out drainage apparatus, and making sure things work, and ordering sand, and making sure that if it freezes, we sand the, where it's freezing. And when it rains, those same crews are out in the middle of the night, making sure that there's not flooding, that signs are put up. People don't realize how important signs are. If it's dark, and there's not a sign telling you a flood's coming up or something, you're in danger. So our crews do a really good job keeping this community safe. You never think about Lancaster as being flood-prone, but someplace that's flat as a billiard table is definitely flood-prone. So hats off to the public work crews for all the good work they do, and will continue to do during the winter. Next, looking forward to 2018, besides April municipal election, we're going to start the year off pretty good with a bang. You're going to see the hotel construction on the Boulevard start sometime in March or April. You will also see the homeless service center start around that same time. Mayor, I don't, or you can't, I'm sorry, but I will talk about how this, this is going to be a game changer, and it's going to be a model for the whole county on how to do a continuum of care to serve people. And I know that there are naysayers, and there always are when you try something new. This time next year, we're going to be looking at something that's truly magnificent and made a real difference, and will be replicated around the county, and you can mark that down, anyone who doesn't believe. Lastly, we will finish 2017 off with a video on Magical Boulevard Christmas. I know people are probably sick of Christmas, but if we don't show it now, we're never going to show it. And we'll promote MLK Day coming up on Saturday.
What's your favorite part of the Christmas holiday?
So it brings us all together under one banner with a clear message that we're supposed to love each other. And certainly, this is the time that I think we really do. My wife and I have been incredibly blessed by this community. And everybody's happy, a lot of commerce going on, a lot of kids. I mean, I just love it.
We're celebrating Christmas. We're one of the cities that get to say and want to say Merry Christmas. So it's been eight years since we started this. You can see how it's expanded. I think it's a great thing for the City of Lancaster.
What's your favorite part of this event?
It's watching the kids, enjoying themselves, and seeing what Christmas is about. Christmas is about giving, and that's what Lancaster is about.
I see all the families with the kids, and they're having an amazing time. And we have a fake snow out there, and it's just amazing. And we have something to do out here locally. And we see all our Antelope Valley families coming up on Saturday evening. It's amazing.
It's about community and bringing families out. You know, I, with all the craziness that we have sometimes in this world, it gives us a chance for families to get together and, you know, come out and enjoy one another. And to me, that's so special.
Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Seems like a long time ago. It wasn't that long, it's only a month ago. Next, as many of you know, we have MLK Day coming up this Saturday, Day of Service. I know that Bishop Hearns will be out there, and then we have Justice Sunday.
And Bishop wanted to say something about it.
You want it before or after?
Oh, you want to do it before or after? We have a video. Up to you.
Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and City Council, City Manager, and all of the staff, all of you, I continue to say, there's only one Lancaster in the world. And I, I can't help from saying that my intent when I retired as a civil engineer out at Edwoods, and retired as the pastor of my church, that I was going to go back to Mississippi and remain there until I go back home to the Lord. But I've, I live in the east part of Lancaster, on the 13th Street East, and I love it. And that's where I plan to be when the Lord comes and gets me to bring me home. It's that good here in Lancaster, as far as I'm concerned. Because you're always looking out for the best of the people here in the community, and not just you as an individual council member. So I want you to know I appreciate you very much. And I wanted to make, that's prelude there, and so I want to say that this, this coming Saturday is going to be a wonderful day when the community comes together to do work in the community, to make our community the best it can be. I have a funeral that I have to do that day, but I'm going to do a little piece of it and then go do the funeral. Then, on that next day, which is Sunday, at 4:00, at 750 West Lancaster Boulevard, which is the Lancaster Performing Arts Center, we have the Antelope Valley High School and the Highland High School coming together to present a story we're calling Hidden Figures. And it's, actually, we're looking at it from the standpoint of the missing pages in history, even before I was born, back in 1933, that these pages people never knew about or didn't talk about. And they're going to present them. And the presenters will be black, black youth, white youth, brown youth, youth. And they're going to be doing that with enthusiasm to let us know that those missing pages of history has now come to light. I want you all to know, as a city council and a city, I appreciate you to the highest for sponsoring this entire program. And thank you so very much for the opportunity to make this presentation. Have a few more of these left? If anybody wants them, I'd be glad to have it. We invite, by the way, it's no cost. The city has already sponsored it for us. So we're looking for you to be there 4:00 on this coming Sunday in the Lancaster Performing Arts Center. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bishop.
Join your neighbors in shaping and transforming your community as the City of Lancaster presents the 2018 Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. The City of Lancaster encourages its citizens to come together in the spirit of service. For more information or to become a sponsor, call 661-723-6077, or email mlkday@cityoflancasterca.org. The 2018 Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Make it a day on, not a day off.
Thank you. City Clerk, any announcements?
This is the time to address the city council, agency, and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Shannon McDonald. So, did you get your papers in?
Yes, I did.
You did?
I sure did. Britt called me and let me know, so. Only two of us have done it so far. I'm just waiting for you guys to just throw me a curveball with that. Come on, I like a challenge, please. I came up here really, good evening, by the way.
You look nervous. Are you nervous?
I mean, I got to run at some point for city councils, don't I? I really wanted to come up here and thank you. You weren't here when I spoke about how my grandmother has so much positive to say about you. And I wanted to thank the city for making my request happen so quickly. As far as looking at my grandmother's street, how it's so close to Lancaster Boulevard, it is on Lancaster Boulevard. And there's a lot of traffic that comes through there with the, I was thinking about the Christmas Boulevard thing, and how everyone parks on her street. Everyone parks there. So Thursday, I'm meeting with the engineer, and he wants me to tell him what really needs to be done. I appreciate that, because my grandmother loves you to death. She, she appreciates...
Grandmother sent me something on Facebook, didn't she?
Did she?
Yeah, okay, now I know where that is.
It was, it was probably a really nice thing, but she has liked all the mayors that we've had, including Bishop Hearns. But there's just something about you that, you know, we see so much stuff happening in our city. The growth, just everything's so beautiful. And I agree with Bishop Hearns, I can't go anywhere. Like, this is my city. I plan on raising my children here. I love how I say "my city" every time, huh? All y'all are mine, see? This is all mine. But I just wanted to say that.
You know, if you get elected, you got to quit saying that. It offends people. My wife smacks me all the time.
For saying yours, it's all yours. Well, I just wanted to come and thank you for that. That's really all I needed to say, just a big thank you. Okay?
I'm looking forward to the election. It'll be fun. Of course, I'm not running. Maybe you guys don't think it's going to be. Tony Meada?
Can you hear me? Is this good? All right. I just want to start off by thanking everyone here for the service they do for the city. Like he said, my name is Tony Meada. I'm a student at ABC studying under Political Science 101, under Professor Monka Don. While I am just here for that, for a particular assignment of me being here, I had a question my, my, my father wanted to ask in advance, and I apologize if isn't the most appropriate place to ask this. I wasn't really sure. But what he wanted to know was, how does the city plan to promote or like increase the amount of jobs available for the younger residents, like in junior or senior year in high school, or in, or going into college?
Interestingly enough, I mean, it's beyond me that we're in this position. It, I mean, we're truly blessed. Our problem isn't bringing jobs in, it's how to fill them. It, you know, this is the year where everything changes. And it's, I mean, it is so foreign to us that I can't articulate it in a fashion that people will understand. But, you know, because we've always had a problem with, with employment, you know? People, too many people unemployed. People couldn't find jobs. Now, if you want to work and you're willing to do the job, there is no reason in the world. You, you can't. Well, let me retract that. There's still, still an issue of people with criminal backgrounds being able to get employment. And, and we're working on that. But that will always be a problem, I think, for the foreseeable future. But absent a felony conviction, anybody who wants a job in this community is going to have one. Isn't that right? Absolutely. Absolutely. And this is, and she's one of the people that are heading up this.
So I'll speak for the aerospace industry, notably North of Grumman Corporation, whom I work for. I'm the Site Integration Manager for that facility here in Palmdale. And one of the things that we're doing right now is we have an AFAP program where we take, you know, students in that want to go to Antelope Valley College and do 120 units of semester hours, and we're actually training them to come into some of our technician positions. But the thing with our corporation and sort of underscoring what the mayor just addressed is a lot of our positions at North of Grumman, Palmdale, are you have to have a security clearance. Not, not every job there, but most of the jobs, I would say probably 85% of the positions that we do have there. So if, and that goes, I guess, saying if, if there's a felony conviction, doesn't mean that you would not be able to get a job there, but it just depends on what that conviction was. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, and I cannot state on the record where our growth is because of security reasons, but we are ramping up. We've got a number of programs there. But this program at Antelope Valley College that we've partnered with for over the last four years, and we're continuing to partner, we cannot hire enough people, even through that school. We've even expanded to, we've got a facility that's sort of an offshoot of that program out of Palmdale at the, the airport. So it's, I would say, look into some of those things. It depends on what industry that you're looking for. So I can speak for the aviation industry, like I said, namely North of Grumman Corporation.
I think one of your questions was how are we preparing the youth for it? So one of the things that we were doing is me and Mr. Molly went down to Los Angeles and looked through some of the union shops down there. Then their shops, they're training people, and we had the opportunity to speak to everyone there. And it was impressive to us that about, I'd say 35% of the people that were there were from Quartz Hill, Lancaster, Palmdale area. So what we've done is we've gone into the college and we've partnered with the unions, and they are now training these people for jobs here in the valley. So it is, that's how we're doing it as a council, is we're partnering with people that are hiring these people to prepare them for their future. Does that help?
Yes.
Thank you. And tell, tell her to give you an A for this. Orlando White?
City Council Mayor, glad to meet you. Well, finally know basically who's who over the last three months. First, I'd like to give honor to God and thank you guys for being true representatives of Lancaster. I'm here for representing the veterans. I go to, started going to the town hall meetings, but I'm a member of DAV, and we was told that you had the transportation already set, but you was low on numbers, which is understandable. But we had, we had a good meeting today with your representatives and city representatives, state representatives, with Knight was there, and so everything has come together and, you know? There's no reason to complain when you guys doing your job and things is coming together as long as you have a voice and people willing to help, which is, you know, what I'm working on. So I'd just like to say, you know, great job and people I met, everything is, you know, basically coming together. I be dealing with, with Palmdale Regional for the numbers, because they said you guys had the transportation, but the numbers is low. So I'll be, I'll be working with them and the city officials and other members that I met today at the senior citizens, because Knight and certain people come to the veteran meetings. And so, you know, I just, I like to thank you because things is coming together as long as you got somebody there and, you know, the voice. And like they say, you know, you guys don't know what's going on unless somebody let it, you know, let it be known, no matter who you are or what you doing or whatever, but you're doing a great job. And, you know, I'd like to thank you. You got my support, and I'm trying to support you. I just got a certificate from Congress, so whoever's taking names for certificates, my name is Orlando Stillwhite. And you'll be seeing me, so, you know, you can get mine ready by, at least by Christmas. The big trophy, the glass one, not the, the paper ones, already got one of those congressional honors. I pass those out. So, but I'd just like to thank you and everything is coming together, but hopefully through, you know, it's already been discussed, it's already been known, and now we're just bringing it back up. It's a brand new year for the transportation, for the VA, and we're working on it. And so sooner or later, you'll be, you know, it'll, it'll come to you to where, you know...
No, we're, we're well aware of it.
To bring up the numbers?
We're working it with the, the funding and to get it through the AVTA.
We all, yeah, we already know, because I go to the hometown meetings, Sepulveda, then Palmdale. But I love Lancaster because it's professional.
I appreciate it.
This is professional.
I appreciate it.
So, you know, I love it and I'm here and I just, I just want to thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You know, and hey, God bless you all and keep up the good work. It's, it's good to complain, but you get more just by being grateful and helping out. And I, I just want to thank you, so.
Thank you.
You guys are doing an excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
Even with the homeless, because that was one issue that a lot of the, the people that, you know, hide behind, everybody want to write a book, but you can't eat a book or a book can't keep you warm. And I was homeless, and I've been there before. I'll go to 60th Street, I'll donate, but what I got now, I'm in the Veterans Program VAS, but I'll be buying a house this year in Lancaster and property for the homeless vets, so I know I'll be back because I need assistance, and I have. Jason, I have to say Jason, but now, because still now that I see it, by the way that you read it, and I got, I got the numbers, but everything is coming together, you know, and I just, I just want to thank you again, you know?
Thank you, Orlando.
You have, you have a great staff.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is it Tatevik? I'm going to let you pronounce your last name.
Kyrklian.
Okay.
Thank you. As my classmates said, I'm here for, I'm a student in Antelope Valley Political Sciences, and I had question about job also. And my question, my concern was the, when we apply for the job, they always ask for experience, but when a student just finishes and he doesn't have experience, but they don't take. My, I don't know, is there any work?
Sometimes that experience translates into education. So if you make sure that you have a good education, that's what they're looking for as far as experience also. So that might be able to help. Angela?
The first thing I thought of, I, actually, this came up for someone that I had interviewed recently, and they didn't necessarily have the experience for the job. However, what we discussed are other things that they could do outside of actually having that job experience, which goes back to becoming a part of different committees at school, working with, within the community itself, too, to have things that you could put on to your resume that kind of go along with the career path that you're, that you're seeking, so that when you're in front of the person that you're interviewing with, then you could say, well, I may not have the actual job experience, but here's what I've done within those types of groups.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Nestor?
Yes, sir. Evening, everyone.
How are you today?
I'm doing amazing. Thank you for asking. I'm also part of the Political Science class. I came here with no idea what I was going to ask until I came in and the lady earlier, she left, she's part of the opioid crisis team. Eleven-year vet, I was addicted to opioids, almost killed myself. I would like to get involved with this group. I grew up here in Lancaster, so I have a very, I would love to get part of this group. How do I get information on things that happen that I get brought to this, so I can connect with them?
Jason can help you. You can call Jason and he can point you in the right direction.
Okay.
So we're always looking forward to volunteers and, you know, if you're, isn't that what Martin Luther King said, Henry? It's about volunteering, everyone can volunteer.
Anyone can be a star because anyone can serve.
Right. So we would be glad to have you.
Yeah, so John, Jason, excuse me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Katrina?
I'm also a Political Science student, and I just want to thank you guys for everything that you guys are doing in the community. I had no idea. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Cheyenne Bryant?
Hello, I'm Cheyenne Bryant, and I'm also one of the Political Science students that's just here to do a research paper on basically everything that goes on here. I actually kind of like that I may come back just by myself at some point. And I really don't have a question. I kind of had one for the mayor, but he's not here right now, so I'm going to just leave it at that and say thank you guys and go take my seat.
Thank you. George Gibson?
Yes, thank you. I'm also from the Political Science 101 class from Amaka Don, but I mainly wanted to talk about today, earlier in the meeting, you were talking about the housing. I know I can't ask questions about that, bud.
You can ask questions.
Oh, okay. Along with that, since it's just, I don't know if it's free housing for homeless people or what, but with that, will there be like drug tests or incentives for them to reintegrate back into society?
I think that there's going to be incentives for them to be able to move up. So once they meet certain incentives, they're going to be able to move up into better housing, into better availability. So I believe that's the way that it's going to work.
All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Ali?
They must not have school tonight.
Evening.
If you don't ask us a question, we're going to ask you one.
Please don't. Yeah, I'm also from the Political Science 101 class, Amaka Don in ABC. Basically, I just wanted to come and say, I guess, thank you. I do have a question, but excuse me because I didn't know this was, this was going to be this professional. So I might forget some things, some words. I'd like to thank you guys especially about the homeless aspect in the AV. I've actually been working at Grace Resources with my church for almost four years now, and we go there about once or twice a month. We always serve hot meals. We always try and, you know, give out clothes, you know, free toys to the kids and stuff like that. And this last holiday season, the Sunday before Christmas, I think that was about the biggest crowd we ever saw. And even though we are kind of working towards, I guess, attacking the homeless situation, I kind of feel that, at least to me, I see that the numbers are kind of growing. And I have, I've done a research paper for my school about the homeless situation. I've actually cited some of your works on Vice Mayor Chris, I've cited some of Mayor Paris's works, and you guys are honestly trying. I know that, you know, I'm not, I'm not really, I'm not in politics, so I can't really say how that goes, but I really feel that at least something should be done, whether it's, you know, permanent housing, well, not necessarily permanent housing, but permanent supportive housing, try to help some of these people, because I personally know some of them. They, they have disabilities, some of them have mental issues, some of them are in rehab, they can't exactly find a job. And, you know, being out there for a long time, as a kid, you know, I'm only 18, I've been only working there for four years, so, I mean, AV, I mean, Lancaster's a great place. I'm not going to lie, it's a really good place. I, I came here because of, you know, downtown was a little bit difficult, but, I mean, I think it could be a little bit better. I'm not exactly sure about, you know, like I said, I don't want to come out and say, you guys are doing a good job, because I don't know what it is to, you know, because it is a situation that we kind of have to attack as a community. And I guess my question is, since I'm running out of time, is, basically, I still have to kind of brainstorm this. Where do you guys, or at least how long do you guys think that it will take for the, let me say for the majority, or at least a good portion of the homeless to get off the streets permanently with at least being employed or a job or a stable condition?
Well, part of that is the job, the education, the healthcare. If you look, we've added over a half a million square feet of new healthcare facilities in the last four years. So we've also added a element of jobs that's here. Ten years ago, the unemployment level here was over 16%. It's about 4.5% now. So we're at that level where we try to take care of the things that you have an opportunity to work, you have an opportunity to get an education, and you have an opportunity to get proper healthcare. So we're trying to do all those things as far as what the City Council is doing. How long will it take for everyone to get off the street? I don't think that will ever happen because some of the people out there don't want the help. They, they just, they, that's the lifestyle that they've chosen, so they, they don't want the help. So as sad as that is, but we'll continue to do the best that we can and provide them with the jobs, the education, and the help that they need. So that's... Thank you. Thank you. Just so everybody here knows, and especially for the, the Boy Scouts, government money is compartmentalized, okay? I like to explain to it is, we have 16 different colored pots, and the money is in 16 different pots. And you can't take the money from the blue pot to spend over there on the green pot, okay? That's what the people on that side believe you can do. We make some decisions up here that might seem that we're crazy, okay? And an example of that is transportation funding. We have received, I think it's around $85 million to redo our interchanges. So the interchanges that are being redone, we could use that money in other areas, but the government has told us and has asked us to go in and to do that, and has dedicated that money just for those interchanges, just for that part. So understand that those might be the reasons why we make some decisions that aren't quite what you would look to see to do that. I'm going to turn the, back over to the mayor.
Hey, you go through a lot.
Yes.
Gillen?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm also from the Political Science class.
We knew that.
As you can tell. So my question for tonight was, I live on, off of M on L12. It's a dirt, dirt lot, like dirt road. Is there, is it this, I guess, is it the city's responsibility or what are the procedures for having someone in like level, going out there and leveling out the dirt? Because usually it's like, like these days, like rainy days, we get like puddles, like lakes, and it's a, it's a pretty bad, I'm like, I have a sedan, so it's on a truck, so it's pretty bad on the, on the suspension and, and, yeah, it can be costly.
You know, the, the, the way streets and residential areas are built is the developer builds them, and then they're dedicated to the city, and then we maintain them. The people who built in that area, for whatever reason, were not required to put in streets and curbs and gutters, and, you know, and so you're kind of stuck with it because the city has no obligation. Now, you know, I kind of, I get what you're saying. I mean, it seems like we ought to be able to figure out a way to, to at least move them out. What's the deal on that?
It really depends on if it's a public or private ownership. A lot of those dirt roads are privately owned.
Most of that property that, in the area that he spoke about, and whether you start at the freeway and you go west, Mayor, is they're actually private roads.
Well, maybe we should talk about dedicating them to... Well, maybe we should talk about dedicating them to the city. Could we do that?
Um, we could look at his particular location. We could talk about that. There, there is a cost component both to the homeowner and dedicating it back.
Oh, the, the city attorney's shaking her head like we don't want to go there.
You'd, you'd, you'd accept a road, it would have to be improved to a level we'd accept it, which is cost prohibitive probably.
Oh, really?
It needs to be improved to the city's standards before we can accept it.
Yeah. Philippi, you're going to have to buy a truck.
Seems like it. And, uh, thanks again for, uh, doing all the stuff you're doing for the, for the homeless.
That's good for, that's good for the truck place.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Like you said, my name is Marlene Moreno. I don't know if you guys remember him, me a little bit. Um, I know Mark. I'm the lady who always got to the city of Baguio for the crossing at 17th Street West. I mean, East, um, by Discovery. Yeah, yeah. So, um, I just miss those guys that were doing a wonderful job. I'm here just to thank you. I be, I see you there working really hard in all those streets. And thank you for all the job that you guys do. And I miss those kids. Last year, I have certificates for them, but this year I miss them all, so I don't have one for you guys this year. But, um, I'm also here to, to introduce you some good friends of mine and, um, also to let you know, I don't know if you guys hear about the accident we have in Avenue I and between Challenger and I think it's 15th Street East, about the young lady, 17 years old, who died, is, I think it was 25th and Christmas December. She got in a, um, yeah, okay, so, uh, her mom is really devastated and she's a friend of us. And, um, I remember when we started the project for, um, fixing those sidewalks and, and, and do the crossing right there for the students at Discovery School, we asked you to, if you can help us, please to lower the speed limit right there. It's very dangerous and it's, she's not being the first one who has died about being a speed limiter crossing the street right there. And I don't know if you can keep helping me with that. I mean, I really appreciate everything you have done for us in that community over there in the east side. And please help us with that speed limit or at least, I don't know if you guys been aware too, that those posts are being, um, thrown down by the cars for being in the speed limit as well. So you guys have been fixing it for a couple times, if I don't be exaggerating about that. So, I don't know, we can do something else right there in the middle of those high school zones. And, um, the other thing is that I have my friends over here, so you can meet them. I have some, um, couple people that I want you to meet. And they're from, um, TPS, that, that, you know, yes, past last, um, I think it was yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, and she's here to, to explain that to you better than I. Her name is Sandra.
Hi, um, so I want to thank you for, um, hearing about all the awesome stuff that you do in Lancaster. So I think we are in the right place. Uh, my name is Martha and I, and we are, um, from the TPS Alliance, from the temporary protective status that, um, that we have. I'm from Honduras. And there are 13 countries who had, who have this temporary protected status. Uh, El Salvador was, they made a decision for them yesterday. And we are hoping that Lancaster know that we are TPS Alliance and that we live in this, in this area. And we want your support. We want your support, um, so that you could do something for us, uh, in the Trump administration and let them know that we are the working class community, that we are here and we have our children. Some of us have houses, some of us have businesses in the United States, so we are here to ask for your support and also for a meeting with you. We know, I, I know that my group came to Lancaster, to the council, to ask for a meeting, and they gave us a meeting until 2019. So, we are hoping for you to meet us and know that we are here to work.
Wait, wait, wait.
We are working people. We're working people. We're paying our taxes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, tell me that again. You couldn't get a meeting till 2019?
Until 2019, that's what it told us. So, um, it would be nice, you know, that if we-
That's not right. Where's Myra?
I don't know with who you tried to make the meeting. Some of them tried to, I, not myself.
Okay, hold on. Where, where's Myra? Is Myra still here? There she is. Okay, this is Myra. Myra runs my calendar.
Uh-huh.
Myra will set up a meeting.
Oh, okay, Myra, so we-
But, but, you know, on that issue, I, I, I kind of want everybody to get that, do we really want to attract the attention of the federal government to Lancaster? Do we really want ICE breaking in people's doors and deporting parents of American citizens? And we do that when we, if we start making an issue of it. I just want to stay below the radar. I mean, you know, there, there, there's different views in this city about whether or not undocumented, uh, parents of American citizens should be allowed to stay. I'm of the opinion, we do not, we do not hurt American citizens who are children. And how can you take away their parents and not cause severe injury to them in the process? I mean, that's just my personal belief. But I, I, what I'm seeing in the news is, you want that to start happening? Start poking the tiger. And, you know, the federal government's a lot bigger than us. I, I just don't see a lot of benefit to us taking that battle on. I mean, it makes us feel good. It, it, you know, I could attract a lot of newspaper coverage and a lot of news coverage and, but a lot of children will lose their parents if I do. And so I'm reluctant. I'm reluctant to get involved in that at all.
I think if we don't do nothing, then those children, because the parents are going to be deported, then it's when the problem is. So, we are here, most of us are here more than 19 years.
Are they, they're not being deported from here yet. And you want to make certain that they are? Just, just start making a lot of noise about it. I mean, I, I totally get it, but I, I, I honestly believe that it is our obligation to protect the children of this community, especially who are American citizens. The worst thing you can do to a child is separate that child from his parents. I mean, so it, when you, when you look at the priorities of it, I don't, it doesn't seem to me to matter whether you're for it or against it. It's just wrong. It's just wrong to inflict abuse on children, especially American children. Uh, I mean, that's my view, but I'm not going to, to get on any bandwagon over it, because I don't want to be the catalyst of it. Okay?
Can, can we make the appointment with the superintendent?
Sure. My, my role set it up, okay?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate all your help.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for coming to see us, okay?
Oh, thank you very much. My pleasure. I always-
Also, would you have, uh, would you have traffic get out there and see if there's some way to improve that area?
Um, yeah, we will. We'll take another look at it. And, you know, the issues with speed limits, but we'll see if there's some mitigating circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any way we can get a light right there in between a crossing light, like?
So, it, all of that stuff requires engineering reports and then the state tells us what we can do and what we can't do. It's not just simply a, a procedure where the city can say yes or no. It, it's really an involved process, as much as I wish it wasn't. I mean, you know, let's face it, I would love to be able to just say, do this, do this, but-
I understand. And, I mean, we really appreciate all, all duty for us over there in the east. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the boys, everybody over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah.
Council comments?
No, you're going to say something about the children that, uh-
Yeah, council comments? What do you have? What do you have to say for yours? I just want to know, we talked about having a moratorium on, uh, road improvements in December. Where that's at? It's, it's January 9th, so we, we had a little time to figure it out. I just want to make sure that you know that we're still looking at it. Uh, absolutely, and, uh, we will bring it back to you, but it hasn't been at the top of the list since it's not Christmas yet.
Oh, he's going to wait till next Christmas.
Yeah, then he'll say, well, maybe next year. Sometime between January and, you know. Okay, it's a priority on my list.
Hey, he's the vice mayor. I mean, I wouldn't worry about it.
We're going to bring it back.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Have you got anything else?
The adjournments.
Huh?
The adjournments.
The city council will adjourn in memory of Tom Connolly and Robert Kenneth McKi- Keefhoffer, I'm sorry. This is too much reading for me, I'm telling you. Tom Connolly came to the city of Lancaster as a part-time maintenance aide I in 2003. After a short and successful tenure at that position, he was appointed to a full-time status as a maintenance worker I in January of 2004. Tom was instrumental to parks and facilities maintenance over the course of his career, having contributed to the successes of our two flagship sports facilities, the Lancaster National Soccer Center and Lancaster City Park, now Deputy Stevo and Memorial Park, where the city hosted many athletes, young and mature, through sports tourism and champion softball and soccer tournament play. He was promoted to maintenance worker II in October 2007. His final assignment was here at Lancaster City Hall. Tom, Tom took pride in his efforts to maintain the interior assets within these walls and the relationships he cultivated and gained over the last six years of his career. Tom was valued, he was successful, befriended and loved. We were truly lucky and blessed to have him in our midst.
I think Ken was going to do Bob's.
You want to do Bob? Okay, good.
Thank you, Marvin. Robert-
Wait a minute, Marvin didn't do it.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
It's just the vice.
We appreciate this. This, this was yours, right? Okay. Robert Kenneth Bob Keefhoffer was originally from Frederick, Maryland. Growing up, Bob was a Boy Scout, a lifeguard, a master counselor of the Frederick chapter of the DMLA. He graduated from Frederick High School and went on to earn degrees from the University of Maryland and West Coast University. A gifted entrepreneur, Bob ran his own software company, Cherry Systems, invested in real estate and combed a restaurant, Cali Cafe. This success allowed him to fulfill his many passions, including traveling, fishing, giving back to his community as a volunteer and a philanthropist. Excuse me. Bob is, Bob is lovingly remembered by his longtime friends and business partners, Ken and Rosemary Mann, Lancaster, California. We're going to miss you, Bob.
Ken, we're sorry for your loss. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming home.